My question is specifically for the individuals that work in mental health as well as Department of Human Services. Well, it's not real questions. I just want to kind of... District, both of the districts that both Representative Word as well as Representative Elias represent, a lot of the people in those areas, there are a lot of mental health issues. There are a lot of people who could definitely take advantage of some of the opportunities that the Department of Human Services, and a lot of, I mean, I know about a lot of programs, but a lot of people don't know about them. So if you would, if you all could address that and just kind of expound on some of the programs that you offer?
Southeast Arkansas Behavioral Health, we cover five counties. So let me start with that. We cover Arkansas, Grant, Cleveland, and Lincoln Counties. And our services are available seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That's why I'm sitting here with a beeper and cellphone in my hand. If I know what you're gonna do, who is she? Okay, that's forensics, because we cover the emergency room, just so that you will be aware. If there was a person who presents, for example, who is either homicidal, suicidal, or they may be delusional or psychotic, the emergency room at Jefferson Regional or the emergency room in Arkansas County and Secor will call us. We are like the first line. So we are the people who go actually go out to the hospital, and we screen patients to determine if that patient needs to be admitted in the hospital or not. Now, we do a wide variety of services. We do individual therapy, group therapy, family counseling, drug counseling, psychiatric evals, forensics, case management, day treatment services. And some people, you're right, don't know that all of these services are available to them. And there's one thing about our agency that I've appreciated through the years is that if a person presents to us and they are in a crisis, they will be seen that day. They will not be turned away. If they're in some type of crisis, they will be seen by a professional person who will assess their situation and determine exactly what type of services that they need. Now, of course, we can't be everything to everybody, but certainly we make a sincere effort to do that. And Mr. Hughes, now I was just talking about him, because he knows that I will call him. If I get someone in my office and he has the service that I need, then I'm gonna be calling him. Same thing with Ms. Emerson. She's looking at me because she does housing. And a lot of patients, of course, with mental health issues have problems with housing. So I'm constantly calling her, and she knows that, and she will do everything that she can. So I must say that people in this community make some type of assertive effort to provide for their mental health patients what they need. In addition to that, with Judge Brown sitting there, I'm gonna say that Southeast Arkansas Behavioral Health also works with Juvenile Drug Court. So we are in a lot of different arenas, a lot of different areas, and we're trying to do everything that we possibly can to ensure that the patients that we serve will receive quality care and that they will be able to access that care when they need it. We have a staff of psychiatrists, psychiatric social workers, LPCs, LPEs, case managers, nursing staff, and all the other tech that they want to share something about that as well. So if you have a more specific question about what you'd like to know about our agency, does that kind of help you?
I know, I just wanted...
Wanted to do that?
Yeah.
If you would, if you would allow, I had another question for the audience. Is mental health a major issue in Pine Bluff?
Oh, yeah. Do I need to stand up on the...
I'll stand up.
You need to stand up there, okay. Uh, yes. I think right now, Kathy, we have a little over forty thousand?
We have, we have five thousand six hundred and seventy persons that our agency served last year. We served five thousand six hundred and seventy persons last fiscal year, and that's about seven hundred thousand different visits. So yes, we have significant issues in this community. And to echo what Representative Word was saying, when our population declined, the funding that we get to treat those persons without resources went with that population decline. So we have been in constant contact with the legislators, trying to make sure that we are able to maintain the services that we currently provide right here in your community. That is what changed mental health, is when it became accessible to people in their community, when we all didn't have to get in the car and go to Little Rock to access services. And so to echo Bessie's comments about our staff, you have some of the most well-trained, well-educated mental health professionals right here in your community. And when you have the need, you need to be using those services that are available to you in your community. And like Bessie also said, we cannot be everything to everybody. But I can guarantee you that we are making a dedicated conscientious effort to treat the individuals that need our services in this community.
I just wanted to add, just so that everyone will know, we do work a lot with children, and we have a number of programs that we work with, with our young people. We work with all of the school districts. We have a program called CAS, and we also do System of Care. And I guess I just want to take a poll of how many of you knew that we were providing CAS, which is Child and Adolescent Service System Program, and then System of Care. Those are services that are available to families who need assistance in many different ways after they receive what we call a wraparound. And also, in my work through the years in chemical dependency as well as with mental health issues, I've worked a lot with young people. As a matter of fact, my youngest patient was about twelve, who was addicted to cocaine, to marijuana, to speed, and to alcohol. And so you know that drug addiction has no respect to age, or sex, or economic status, or religious status, so anyone can be affected. And my oldest patient was like seventy-three, and she was addicted to prescription drugs. So not only do we work with people who abuse drugs, if they can get on the streets, we also work with patients who go to their doctors and actually may become addicted to something that is prescribed for them.
I'd like to chime in just briefly. From a department standpoint, we've put a lot of emphasis on making sure that children get the kind of services that they need. As these ladies mentioned a moment ago, the System of Care Act that was passed a few years ago actually was sponsored by then Representative Ernest Brown, that really has made a difference in how we treat children around this state. In fact, First Lady Jen Bibby went around the state to all over the state, to several counties. I think she made about thirty stops, just meeting with families. She told us to stay in Little Rock. She wanted to meet with families and people in the community to get a sense of some of the issues going on with children. We wanted to start early as a department to start identifying and addressing some of those issues early. So just like the organization comes to a level of professionals all across the state, we've found that there's not a shortage of people to address the problems around this state. In fact, there was a moratorium on issuing, on starting new services. But we've found that perhaps the services weren't exactly tailored to the needs of those children. A lot of work has been done with professionals and paraprofessionals and with families, with people who use the system, consumers, with children. A lot of focus groups, a lot of town hall meetings, a lot of input was gathered. And we really believe that we're doing a better job systemically of addressing the problems of behavioral health issues with children. So I just wanted to give you your homeboy, the now Judge, his props because he really got out front and took the lead in identifying this as a statewide issue. And today, we have a law in place that we believe really meets the needs. And so the governor made it a priority in his budget for last session and put additional money in, took stimulus dollars in fact, and put monies in to help, to move the agenda down the field for children who need a behavioral health. And I just wanted you all to know that as well. So services are out there. It's not a shame to need the services. It's a shame to not get them when you need them. So if you need them or you know someone who needs them, please put them in touch with one of our local offices or with an agency just like these ladies represent, and let's get them some help. I'd just like to ask Deputy Jones to tailwind departments that he's over, because he has like several different departments that he's over and that they do various things.
Very good, thank you. VHS, large agency. It's the largest state agency. Eight thousand employees across the state. Our budget alone is five billion dollars. Now, when we do that, when I say five billion dollars, we're not doing all of these services. Primarily, services are provided through local providers, just like this agency and like United Family Services here in town, and a number of other agencies across the state that do the direct services. We pay bills primarily through Medicaid. Medicaid alone is four billion dollars of our budget. And you've been reading a lot about Medicaid and what's going on, and it just really has had some challenges. It's been growing at a rate of about eight percent a year, unsustainable, faster than our budget that's grown way faster. So we've been doing some things. But those eight divisions of our department that I personally supervise are Division of Youth Services. That's all of the youth that go through Judge Brown's court and get adjudicated. And they either need some community services or they need to come and spend more time in confined service, getting more intense services, in hopes that we can get them addressed, get them back home and in the community and do it better. So Division of Youth Services, Division of Aging and Adult Services. We work closely through the Triple H. Representative Word is helping to run one of those, the one down here in Southeast Arkansas. The Triple H primarily provides services for our aging and our disabled population. I also have the Division of Volunteerism, which is now the Division of Community and Nonprofit Support as a result of a bill that passed a couple weeks ago. They work with nonprofits around the state with faith-based entities and with the AmeriCorps program for the state of Arkansas. I have the Division of Early Childhood Education. The pre-K program is housed in that agency as well as we work and monitor all of the day care and preschools throughout the state of Arkansas. And the Division of Services for the Blind, and that's individuals who are visually impaired who need eyeglasses or just independent learning skills, living skills, and we help them. But VHS has a lot more. There's five other divisions, and that's, you'll have to help me. I've got Division, BMS, that's Medicaid. DDS, Developmental Disability, that's the individuals in the human development centers. My goodness. Behavioral Health, Division of Behavioral Health. And what about they got left out?
On your side?
On James. Division, Division of Children and Family Services. I'm really getting in trouble about that one. And there's one other, somewhere.
County Operation.
County Operation. That's basically the county offices around the state. So it's a huge agency, a lot of people doing a lot of things over here. In fact, one other, just quick point. Ten years ago, when I was in the House of Representatives, we served about seven hundred and fifty thousand Arkansans. Today, one point five million Arkansans come through our doors. That's not counting anybody twice. One point five million. So about half the population of our state uses the services of your Department of Human Services. That's why our budget is so large, and that's why it continues to grow at pretty rapid rate. Now, if someone asks about healthcare, just very quickly. Someone asks about healthcare reform. If healthcare reform is enacted as it was passed through Congress, that will mean about another two hundred and fifty thousand Arkansans that will be added to our rolls on top of the one point five that are already there. So it's gonna have a huge impact in Arkansas. Quite frankly, a lot of people in Arkansas need services. And this bill really addresses a lot of the needs in its present form. I think they're still doing some adjusting to it, and we don't know about the final feeling at this point. But I think it's good because not everybody who comes to our doors are eligible for the services, and they really do need it in many instances. So this will help us to take care of some of them for a little while, at least.
Thank you. We're gonna take another question from the audience, and we'll come back to two of our panelists that had had a chance to kind of summarize what they're doing in the community. And if there are any more questions, you may want to get them, because after that, we're gonna wrap it up with some recent.
I'd like to address the lottery issue. I understand that there was in excess of six hundred million dollars generated by the lottery this year, but only twenty percent of it went toward the scholarships. Now, let's use the figure, six hundred million, twenty percent of that is twelve million, one hundred and twenty million dollars. That's four hundred and eighty million dollars that's out there available, but now they're talking about cutting everything ten percent. Am I correct?
Yes.
And, you know, it appears Mr. Passa Lee is like his WWE, you know, tag team wrestling. They threaten him with what they're gonna do, and then they pat him on the behind, you know? You know, he makes in excess of three hundred and something thousand dollars. And it appears that he's got his own thing going. He's not responsible to nobody, I don't guess.
Well, you know, let me address that. I think that when the lottery was actually put out before the public, and you all voted for the lottery, now, it was in the lottery, in the referendum, that only twenty-three percent of the proceeds that would be collected from the lottery would go towards education. And there is right around sixty percent then goes toward prizes, and then the others go toward administration. So you're right, there's twenty-three percent of the lottery funds that's set out for education. Now, what has happened, and the reason why, there is a bill that has been filed to reduce the amount of scholarships that are going to the students and all. They did not anticipate the number of students that will be applying for the scholarships. They had originally, on the first year, they thought that right around eight hundred students may apply, up to maybe sixteen hundred, but then the number and everything like tripled. And right now, those, but actually those students that actually are already in the system that's already received the five thousand dollars, that have received the five thousand dollars for the four years that they are actually committed to paying for their education. Only those new students that will be enrolling into college, four-year or two-year college, they're going to reduce about ten percent, meaning that those students that will be going to a four-year college or university will receive forty-five hundred dollars. Those students that will be going to a two-year will be receiving twenty-two fifty, you know? But now, again, the lottery is not an agency that is actually created by the state. That is an independent agency. It doesn't come under VHS. It doesn't come under any of the umbrella of the state agency. That lottery was more than voted in by the public and with the referendum, and those particular things that were in there were already created there. I think the only thing is that change to the lottery since its inception where that if a person won five thousand dollars, that they were going to take thirteen percent of federal tax out of it. Last year, the Oversight Committee decided that also that they missed capulation on actually the state tax, and now they decided that if a person wins five thousand dollars or more, they also are going to take seven percent of the state tax out of it as well. But those are the only change that the lottery scholarship money has gone through since its inception and since the people voted on it. The twenty-three percent of monies that are going toward the lottery was in the bill when it was actually put out to the public.
Tell me again, how much administration? What percent goes to administration?
Uh, well, let me do the math. They, twenty-three percent actually goes toward lottery scholarship. Sixty percent then goes toward prizes and payout. About seventeen, eighteen, seventeen percent will go toward administrative costs. And like I said, again, that was already more than spelled out in the referendum that you voted for in order to implement the lottery.
We have a couple of questions from the audience that we're about to ask two of our panelists. I want to make mention that this forum tonight is being recorded by University of Arkansas, Pine Bluff TV, and it will be replayed back on Pine Bluff Cable, Channel 24. And they are, I was just told by the TV manager that they can, they will be doing live streaming now on www.uapv.edu. So before, when I ask these questions at the end, make sure, if you would, to give contact information on your agency, so if anyone's watching, they can know how to make contact with you. One of the questions I have is with unemployment so high and the recession still in play, what are some services available to help people gain employable skills? And this is directed to Mr. Sterling Hughes and Mr. William Campbell.
First of all, we have, with Arkansas, we've got patient services. We have two offices, one located here in Pine Bluff, 1703 West 28, 5342404. And what we did primarily with, we did with individuals where we trained most of the individuals and put them back to work. We have seven counselors that work with the individuals. First of all, they come in and they make applications. They are assigned to a counselor if they are eligible for services. When I say eligible, everyone we work with must have a disability. And an example of that, if you have hypertension and you own medication, that's a possibility that that's your eligible. If you have some kind of allergy and you own prescribed medication, you're eligible. We deal with providing training and also some medical services. We have a job placement person that the client is assigned to once they complete their program. We send them to two-year institutions. We send them to four-year schools, beauty schools, barber schools. We have paid some of the tuition. We do not pay all of the tuition. We provide books. Sometime, we provide the meals when they go to college. So whatever that person needs to be successful, if they want to go to work, we try to help that individual. As I stated, we have seven counselors here in the Pine Bluff office, and we have three in the Mont cell office. We serve all of Southeast Arkansas. So if you have a specific question, you know, I'd be happy to answer that. But we're all about work. If you want to go to work, come see us. If you don't want to go to work, you know, you better stay awake, because we're gonna try to put you to work once we train you where you can go to work.
A couple of things with my agency, Department of Workforce Services. Like I said, we changed our name. It used to be known as the Employment Security Department, Employment Security Division, but our director said we need to change our name to Department of Workforce Services, which indicates that we're more about putting people to work instead of just doing unemployment checks. Some of the things that we do, we have Trade Six Night, which is an act implemented if a company decides to close down, going overseas. We pay for books, tuition, anything to help a person go to school and get retrained. And you can do it in a two-year period. And that program seems to be working real well. Then we have, we work with the Workforce Investment Act, which sends people back to school, get retrained, anything with like truck driving to nursing, anything that can finish them in a two-year period. Most of our programs are covered two years. If a person's drawing unemployment and you come to my office and tell us unemployment, and if you're... If a person is drawing unemployment and you decide that you want to go back to school, we have what we call a projected demand list, which is a list of occupations that you go back to school under that's covered. And if you're drawing unemployment and you want to go back to school, what you would do is go out to the school, there's a form you have to get from the school, bring it back to me, and I make a determination whether I would approve it or not. And if I do make the approval, while you're drawing unemployment, you can go to school and one can be worried about making job contacts and all that, and concentrate on finishing school. We're more about trying to get people back to the workforce as quick as possible. I know you hear these stories about people drawing unemployment for two, three, four years, stuff like that. Some of that may be true, but a lot of it's not true, because everybody that comes out unemployment has a different story, and people get together and compare notes, and Brother Word over here may be drawing three hundred dollars a week, and I might be drawing a hundred dollars a week, and I come to him mad because he's getting more money than me, and I want to know what's going on. But people do compare and tell each other what's going on, and a lot of times it's erroneous information. But if you have any kind of question about drawing unemployment, we're the people that you need to see. Like I said, we do the TAA program. We have the T program. We have Arkansas Work Pays. We have a work opportunity tax credit that an employee would get for hiring you to work for them if you fall in a certain category. And that category deals with the economic situation and all that. I guarantee you, most of the people in Jefferson County probably would fit one of those criteria to be covered under the work opportunity tax credit. And like I said, the employer would be a tax credit for hiring you, and it would give you a chance to get a job also. So we're more about putting people back to work. We have a resource service. We resource them in our offices. We do the Career Registered Certificate Program, which was implemented by the governor back in 2007. And that program is a program where you come in and we sit you in front of our computer and you take the work keys test. And that work keys test is based on ACT. And once you score a sufficient level on the work keys, we send you over to CR to get key trained. And when you get the key trained, once you do that, in fact, we give you a certificate signed by the governor which shows that you took and scored that efficiency of what the employer may be looking for. Most of the employers are using it now. A lot of them are still not, but most of them are using like right now, Papermill, where I say Papermill, Evergreen Packaging. They just hired about twenty-five people, and one requirement for it is just come through and take their Career Registered Certificate program through us. We have mobile apps that we bring out. I mean, whatever the community needs, basically, we basically can do it. I'm just trying to think of some of the services that we have.
Point of contact?
The point of contact would be me, William Campbell. My email address is william.campbell@arkansas.gov. Phone number is 870-575-1001. We're located at 1001 South Tennessee Street behind the convention center. People get mixed up with the Arkansas Workforce Center, which is on 28th Street. And like I said, that's where they do the Workforce Investment Act program at, but everything else is done through me. They don't draw unemployment, we do unemployment, and I was sitting there thinking a few minutes ago, on an average week, we probably challenge about eight hundred people per wish for our office. So that checks out because we stay over there.
Mr. Campbell, could you repeat that email address and that phone number a little?
My email address is william, W-I-L-O-I-M dot Campbell, C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L, at Arkansas.gov. Phone number, 870-534-1920. And we're located at 1001 South Tennessee Street behind the convention center.
A current there is legislation pending about unemployment. In order for a person to continue to receive unemployment, they must receive a drug test. And the situation is that, I don't have any problem with that. I'm saying that personally, I don't have any problem with that, but the problem that I have with that part of the legislation, you all are making the unemployed pay for the test. Now, I'm saying that if I'm unemployed, and then you're gonna make me take a drug test, then you're gonna make me pay for it, I don't think it's fair. And I'm saying this, and I just want your understanding about that as far as I could do actually think that that's fairly inflation.
Okay, first of all, my delicious name is RT Weems, and I am. So what I'm about to say, I hope that I'm getting in trouble with it. But I do agree about the drug testing thing, but I don't agree that they should pay for it. But my thing about that is I'm always fussing. People come in and they're drawing unemployment, they flock the drug tests, but still get a check. I flock the drug tests, I'm getting fired up, and I don't like that. So I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, if they flock the test, then if they want to get their unemployment reinstated, then it should pay for the test. But the initial test to see whether or not that they actually are clean or dirty, or whatever term you want to use, I don't think that it should be the burden of the unemployed to actually pay for that test.
But I'm hearing that that is out there, but from what I'm really hearing together, I don't think it's fair.
I got a group of people, well, I'm not...
We, if you would, we have one last question from the audience, and then we're summarizing from our panelists their contact information and any heightened comments that they want the community to know about the agencies in lieu of time.
Yeah. Hey, good evening. Steve Amaze, Fourth Ward Attorney of the great city of Pine Bluff, and my colleague back there, Third Ward Attorney Glenn Brown. Everett, representative, good job also, all of y'all. I have an invitation also for you. I was called from the Shea County, to give you this. And it's the election commissions, the Shea County Election Commission's having a Democratic Committee fundraiser on April the ninth after the Shea County Fairgrounds from two to five. So just let me all know that. But my question is this. In the great city of Pine Bluff, you have people now who complain about the city outlook and everything. Now you have people buying property next to you. They're buying this property, and the property has liens on it, city liens, and it's going to the state. My point is, a lot of people want to know if that's a state law that they can't reduce the cost of the land if you bought, even though you absorb all the costs when you bought the land, even though you're keeping it clean-cut and everything else just to make your property look good next door. I need you guys to look into some legislation that will reduce the cost once a year to waive some of the fees so that people who are trying to develop their... to waive some of the fees, so that people who are trying to develop their neighborhoods and property can, uh, can do it easily and save some money at the same time. At least once a year, the, uh, the cities, uh, can offer a, a reduced cost on their, on their, on their liens. Because what we're doing, we're paying back, back liens for years on this property.
That's a, that's a good question, uh, Alderman Mays. And, uh, the only thing I can say, if it's a law now, uh, the, what we probably need to do is take a look at it and see if, uh, we can offer some legislation to maybe change something like that. But see, here's the key. The key is, it's gonna take all of us to make those things, like you say, um, uh, possible. So, uh, one thing that I would say is, if you're, you feel that strongly about it, let's visit together and see what kind of legislation we can bring to, to help that issue. Uh, because I know we all are pro-Pine Bluff, not just Pine Bluff, but we're pro-Jefferson County. And, uh, I, I most definitely, uh, towards the end, just wanna, wanna thank everybody on the panel, because I believe tonight we had, we shared a wealth of information, a wealth of information that people, some, which myself, I may not have known everything. And this is the way that we actually do that. We come together and kind of fellowship and, and talk, and talk about the different programs and other things that can help move our community, uh, forward. So, um, again, I just wanna thank everybody who's on the panel and as the moderator said, we're gonna take a, a second to let everybody stand up and kinda tell, I'm sorry. You got a question?
Not a question, but I, I, something, no.
Yes, sir.
With all the great work that the Arkansas Minority Health Commission does, I wonder if, and I'm gonna pick, uh, Ms. Trotter, Long Island, explained to the public that it not only served just, uh, blacks, it served, um, Hispanic, women's, and all the different types of people that's being served by this commission. Uh, I think sometime that it's lost in, in the concept of what you're actually doing.
Thank you so much. I'll be happy to answer that question. The commission was developed, formed in nineteen ninety-one, and many of y'all remember and know and love, uh, Jocelyn Elders. She was the reason this commission was formed. It was formed because she saw the disparities, uh, of how African Americans, Hispanics, uh, Asian Americans were, uh, impacted disproportionately by health issues, but yet, uh, not enough concentration was occurring in order to educate that community. However, when she had the legislation and worked with the black legislative caucus to develop, uh, the Minority Health Commission on paper, they were very careful to ensure that in that legislation, that they wrote in there, that it should not and cannot discriminate. That means that whenever we go across the state, our job, I view this work that we do at Minority Health Commission, yes, we focus and concentrate on minorities, but when minorities are healthy, we have a healthier Arkansas overall. And we work in direct conjunction with the governor, uh, in order to ensure that the health of all Arkansans are being served. So as we go out and as we look at the statistics of the people that we serve, generally, on average, we'll have about seventy-two, seventy-three percent are minorities that will come out. But you know what? What underlies health issues, in my opinion, uh, is poverty. And poverty just simply doesn't have a color. And that means that wherever we go, there's always Caucasians, there's always Hispanics, there's always African Americans. So we are so honored and blessed to be able to be a commission that works for the good of everybody. We may focus in on some areas, but I won't be happy, and my commissioners, uh, Chris Patterson is here, we're not happy unless all of Arkansas is healthy. Thank you.
Real quickly, uh, if you would start from left to right and if you would give contact information about your agency, um, and maybe one or two, uh, heightened points about your agency that you want the community to know.
Very good. Um, the point is, we're the Department of Human Services and our role is to serve the people of Arkansas. Whether you mean Medicaid, food stamps, childcare assistance, or any of those other services that I've mentioned, we're here to serve. Our local office is, uh, at, um, one twenty-two West Sixth Street. We turn on, I introduced earlier, is our county administrator here, that he along with his staff, they do an outstanding job serving the people of Jefferson County. Uh, their number is five three four forty-two hundred. How do you know it? You call it that much? To me, that's, uh, and, uh, that's where our, if you need to reach me, I'm in Little Rock, five oh one six eight two eight six five zero. Again, I'm Steve Jones with the Department of Human Services. And an easy way to get a quick response from me is via email, and that's steven at C V E N dot B O Y dot Jones at Arkansas.gov. And I respond to all of my calls and all of my emails and stuff. Thank you all for having us and Representative Elliott, thank you again for doing what you all do to represent the people well, as well as you represent for us.
I just wanna make mention, each panelist, if you would, take about thirty seconds. I was told we have five minutes, so to sum it up, I'm doing my time.
Uh, we're located, Arkansas locational services, the state, we're located at twenty-seven oh three West twenty-eight, right next to KLC. And I forgot to mention, we survey every high school in the state of Arkansas. So if you have high school seniors, uh, we survey those too. We have nineteen state offices throughout the state. And, uh, feel free to refer people to us over there or call us. Now, I don't give my email because I have too many people sending me emails. So just call the office and let me know anything, thank you.
And again, I'm Bessie L., B E S S I E L, at S A B H S dot org.
Bessie's giving you our, our agency name. Our phone number is eight seven zero five three four one eight three four. You can call that number anytime after hours from any city that we cover and that answer, our phone will be answered by a male health professional and your service need will be addressed. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm sorry, Kathy Harris.
And again, my name is William Campbell and the best way probably is to get me is by email, which is william.campbell@arkansas.gov. Our phone number is eight seven zero five three four nineteen twenty. And I tell you now, you would call that number some days and it would just, you'll probably never get an answer because we got a switchboard that's continuously running. So I tell people, if you can't get us on, on the phone, just send me an email and I will walk out and make sure someone call you back. Thank you.
And my name is James Word, and I guess I'm wearing two hats here. As, uh, Mr. Jones stated, I am an employee of Area Agency of Southeast Arkansas that covers Kent County and southeast Arkansas, and we offer either rides or services for those persons that are sixty-two and older. Uh, and, uh, if you need to get in contact with me, you can contact me through the Area Agency when I'm not doing that state of work. And that phone number is area code eight seven zero five four three six three hundred.
Again, thank you all for coming out. Uh, my name is Representative Ephraim Elliott. Um, my email address is Ephraim, that's E F R E M Elliott, E L L I L T T, at AOL dot com. You can, uh, shoot me an email, I respond to all mine. Um, also, I wanna, uh, thank some other agencies that are out here. There's, uh, uh, we have the Advocate, Children Advocates, um, Arkansas Advocates for Children and Family. I wanna thank them for coming out. And, uh, our dear friend, Ms. Jeanne Epperson, who runs the Housing Authority, who's been a good friend to me for several years and been whooping me anytime she feels like it. So, uh, uh, I wanna thank her for coming out. Uh, I wanna thank everybody again, I am so humbled that you would spend your time to listen and get the information that you, that we're, um, trying to give out. And again, I believe in community first. As elected officials, the community supported us to get here, and I know between myself, James Word, um, Reverend Wilkins, who is Representative Wilkins, Tony Bradford, who's another representative in the house, uh, I'm a freshman and they have been giving me outstanding leadership. So, uh, on behalf of them, uh, and our Jefferson County leadership, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. Before I leave, I wanna say a thank you to Idonia Trotter, who is the Director of Minority Health, who is doing, I mean, a great job of doing. Idonia came in, uh, hitting the ground running. Uh, she has the support of the legislative caucus, not just us, but the, all the other legislators. She is highly recommended and she's doing a great job through the state of Arkansas. And she also has some staff members out here, I, I would like them to stand up. Uh, I would like to give a round of applause to my fraternity brother, Michael Washington, who's also a UAPV director and a wonderful guy too. Again, I, I wanna say thanks to my wife and my family for coming out and supporting me so much. Uh, if it had not been for my wife, I would not be able to do any of this. Uh, and I'm gonna let Ms. Idonia Trotter, uh, close.
Again, you guys, thank you so much. Let's give Representative Elliott a big round of applause. This was a great meeting tonight. I also wanna say thank you to, uh, our senators in this area, Senator Stephanie Flowers, uh, as well as Senator Jerry Taylor. They could not be here tonight, there was another event for the senators in Little Rock, but we wanna say thank you to them. Uh, my staff again, I have to do them right. Ron Howard, he's a minister here in Pine Bluff. LaGloria Payton has joined us and just hit the ground running. Cosetta Jones, uh, she's my communications director. And, uh, Tony Anthony, he's here with us, he's with Reserve Marketing, has been a big part of this event tonight. I also wanna recognize, uh, City Alderman Stephen Mays and, uh, Glenn Brown. Shannon Glenn, thank you all so much for coming and supporting this forum. I also have to say thank you to, um, this entire panel. Have you all enjoyed the information? Let's give them a hand. You know, they don't get paid to come out and do this, so for them to wanna do this, we really appreciate it. And then finally, the food service people, I have to say thank you to James Rice, that food was just wonderful, it was rock and chain. And also, we can't even speak or be on these TV stations without these young being over here, these are the sound guys, Mike Billiard, uh, thank you, Mr. Jones, Evan Lawson. And finally, um, I wanna thank the Jefferson County Health Department, they helped us with screening tonight, Terry Jackson and Laurel Hall, as well as, let's thank the Prince Hall of Masonic Lodge. Thank you all so much again, thank you Representative.